I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pousa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Diddleman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Wiegand.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
All sixteen present, roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay. Fire Chief Tom Poore.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitritt.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Human Resource Director Sherry Salvatore.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation Debbie Belvo.
Here.
Health and Housing Interim Director Jeff Heidorn. Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Waste Water Royce Carlyle.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Here.
I told Jeff Heidorn he was excused and also Chief Clay's excused Lieutenant Thomason is here on his behalf. I think that was it, is it?
Correct.
Okay, tonight ladies and gentlemen, we have Cub Scouts from PAC Two and we have Boy Scouts from Troop Fifty-Three and they're working on various badges. I know the Boy Scouts, I'm more familiar with their language being a past scout master, citizenship in the nation I think and community. And you, other Cub Scouts, you're working on again?
We're working on four bears for third grade, PAC Two, Gen Eight, and we are working on our calls for action. What are our requirements?
Good, very good. Okay, well if, ladies and gentlemen, for those who are able, if you'll stand, I'm going to ask a representative for the Boy Scouts to please come forward and lead us in the pledge.
I look to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Very good, got one from each group, that's great. We wish you well scouts, we get quite a few scouts that come in and it's always good to see the boys pursue their badges and the Boy Scouts as they work towards those Eagles. I strongly, I got two sons and they're both Eagle Scouts and they will tell you now that they're adults that it really did make a difference. People still ask them today about the importance of being an Eagle Scout, so hang in there. Okay, at this time ladies and gentlemen, we have no public hearing this evening. I just, I do want to mention because we had quite a few, several new faces here. If we had to leave here ever, you're in this building, this room, or in City Hall, and we ever had to vacate because of a storm, some kind of weather that would cause us to seek shelter, the police officers that are here would guide you and the city staff across the lobby to right across from the clerk's office is a stairway to go safely downstairs to seek shelter. If we ever had smoke or fire, we would ask that you carefully exit the building, either the front or back door. We ask that you'd consider going over to the sign by the Saint Clair County building just so we can kinda ask everybody if everybody that was with them got out okay. So that's just a procedure that we need to pass on as we get new people visiting these meetings. There's no public hearing this evening. I would like to say I will open public participation if someone, once I call on you, would like to come to the microphone, give your name, keep your comments to two to three minutes about Belleville business pertaining to Belleville items on the agenda or something in the city. So at this time I'll open public participation. Is there anyone this evening? Okay? If there's nobody that has any public participation items, I will close public participation and I will move on to the presentations, recognitions, and appointments. Tonight we have a proclamation I'd like to read and this is really, they're all important, but I think this one is extremely important, it's coming up here next week or the end of this week, Saturday. But this is about, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the city of Belleville celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently thirty point two million small businesses in the United States and they are responsible for sixty-five point nine percent of net new jobs created from two thousand to two thousand seventeen. And whereas small business employees, over forty-seven point five percent of all businesses with employees in the United States. Whereas ninety percent of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States. And whereas eighty-nine percent of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community. And whereas seventy-three percent of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as a part of their holiday shopping. And whereas the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small independently owned businesses was to support their community, sixty-four percent. And whereas the city of Belleville, Illinois supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Mark W. Eckert, Mayor of the city of Belleville, do hereby proclaim November twenty-four, two thousand eighteen as Small Business Saturday in Belleville and urge the residents of our community and the communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year." Folks, this is extremely important because we, you, anybody who's been around our economic development meetings or my staff, we have believed and repeated and preached for years, small businesses are the backbone of this city and we know that. And it's, we're so blessed to have so many unique shops and restaurants and individuals who work together and make their living, but they provide jobs and they provide the economic engine that we need here. Those tax dollars that are spent in Belleville, that's how we pay our policemen and firemen, that's how we fix our local streets where we don't get, we don't get an enormous amount of money from the state these days and we have to, we have to count on sales tax. So we appreciate, the city council and myself and the administration, we truly appreciate when you do as much shopping as possible in the city limits of Belleville, it makes a difference how we can provide the services each and every, each and every week. So we thank you for that and we, we ask that as Christmas season comes to certainly visit our shops and experience some as much as possible. At this time, we move on to the regular portion of the meeting and I ask for the approval of the minutes, motion, I've asked for a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of November fifth, two thousand eighteen. Do I hear a motion? Alderman Diddleman, second by Alderman Steele. Any additions or corrections? All in favor of receiving and filing the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We go on now to the claims, payroll, and dispersments. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of nine hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty cents and the payroll in the amount of eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-three cents. Motion by Alderman Elmore, second by Alderman Pousa. Do I hear any discussions on this motion? Any questions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to oral reports, traffic committee, Alderman Ovian.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am eliminate one, motion to approve no through truck traffic on South Eleventh Street from West Main Street, South Belleville, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Ovian, second by Alderman Pousa to approve this request coming from the traffic committee. Any questions about the motion? All in favor and have the proper ordinance drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Finance Committee, Alderman Consilla.
I make a motion to approve the workman's compensation and property liability insurance package with safety, national, chub, and IPRF.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Wiegand, do I hear discussion? There's no discussion, roll call.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. Sorry about that, I forgot we're crossing over here. Still passed.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve increasing final year of current auditing services contract by a net cost of fourteen hundred dollars.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion on this motion coming from Finance? Roll call once again.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Consilla, one more.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve budget amendments as recommended by the Finance Director.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion on the budget amendments or the recommendations? Roll call.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Diddleman, you want to read this one?
Yes. On behalf of the Planning Commission, I'd like to make a motion on eleven dash C one, Rainstorm Express Car Wash Rusty Modesty EROP LLC, the site plan, landscaping plan, architectural elevations for Rainstorm Express Car Wash at fifty-seven hundred slash fifty-nine hundred North Belleville West, a portion of the parcel numbers zero eight dash one eight point zero dash one zero zero dash zero two three and zero eight dash one eight point zero dash one zero zero dash zero two two located on a one point four acre C two heavy commercial district zone parcel, Ward Eight. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the site plan with stipulation that the necessary subdivision platted approved by the city of Belleville and recorded with Saint Clair County.
Alderman Diddleman, you make that motion?
I didn't.
And do we have a second? Second by Alderman Schaefer. Any questions on this? Yes, sir.
Mayor, now, on this, we're just approving the site plan, correct?
Right.
I mean, we're not approving...
There's no development agreement at this time, there's no...
You got it.
This is just to get it started and get the proper zoning and site work with the Saint Clair County and everything properly filed so that they can move forward. Okay? So we have a motion and we have a second to approve the Planning Commission's recommendations. Roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Motion carries. Ed, can I ask you to read one more?
Yes, I'd also like to make a motion on eleven dash C two, Ashland Storage Belleville, Allen Sim. The site plan, the architectural elevation for a commercial storage facility at six five three Carlyle Avenue, parcel number zero eight dash two three dash, or point zero dash three oh five dash oh two oh located on four point one three acre C two heavy commercial district zone parcel, Ward Seven. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the site plan with the contingency Ashland Storage Works with staff on final material selection for fencing.
Motion by Alderman Diddleman, second by Alderman Elmore. Any questions on this recommendation? Roll call.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries. Economic Development, Alderman Consilla.
On behalf of Economic Development and Annexation Committee, I make a motion to approve a development agreement with Larissa Photography for the remodeling of the existing facility located at nineteen South High.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Gah. Do I hear any discussions? Yes, sir.
Your Honor, I've got a few remarks that I'd like to read before the vote takes place. At the August twentieth, two thousand eighteen city council meeting, I voted no on a proposal to give tax dollars to a local business so it could demolish a building it did not yet own for the purpose of expanding its current location. One of my colleagues here on the city council approached me after that meeting and inquired about my reasons for opposing the request. I appreciated his curiosity and laid out my reasons for voting against the request. Much of that decision rested on the fact said business does not generate sales tax, which means there is no return on that fifty thousand dollar investment by the city. As I drove home from the meeting, I thought about the aldermen's questions for me and wondered if I'd done a disservice to the other aldermen, the constituents of Ward Three, and the taxpayers in this city who did not have a reference point for my decision. This evening, I'm going to provide my reasons for voting no on both the requests coming from the Economic Development Committee. I'm going to discuss what I believe is the primary purpose of TIP, some specifics regarding TIP seventeen, and what I believe taxpayers should expect their leaders to consider when acting as a fiduciary on their behalf. The Tax Increment Allocation Act, or TIP, provides for a number of different uses, too many to include here. When I prioritize, I consider city infrastructure to be the driving force for using TIP dollars. Repairing our streets, curbs, and sidewalks has huge impact. It touches everything from sustaining property values to improving public safety. It's a driving force in people reinvesting in their homes. That's the primary mission. When we entertain other ideas, when we seek to deviate from that mission, there needs to be overwhelming evidence that the economic interests of the city will be served by sales tax dollars generated as a result of taxpayer investment. That is not the case with these two requests. I believe that TIP death rates when created are designed to be self-sustaining and I believe they should be held to that standard. That means the money for any expenditure by that TIP should come from the revenue generated within that TIP. In other words, I don't use my neighbor's money to make repairs to my home. According to the Treasury's report in the city council packet of November fifth, two thousand eighteen, as of September thirty of two thousand eighteen, TIP seventeen had cash on deposit balance of thirty-four thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. The current tax year letting was seven thousand, three hundred thirteen, thirteen dollars and sixty cents with interest income of twelve dollars, ninety-eight cents for total receipts of seven thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars, fifty-eight cents, total cash available of forty-five thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. It should be noted that total dispersments for other improvements totaled expenses of nine thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars. We're spending more than the TIP takes in. But when asked why we couldn't draw on the current balance of thirty-four thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents for these requests, it's because the money is already committed. The city council packet for this evening's meeting contains development agreements for both Larissa Photography and Nestor Realty to be reimbursed five thousand dollars in TIP seventeen funds. It does not detail these funds must be transferred from TIP Three and are the funds to be available. What that means is that those who paid into TIP Three will forego the use of those tax dollars within their district. Arguments were raised in the Economic Development meeting that it's only five thousand dollars in each case and that wouldn't go far to resurfacing a street. I agree and yet I find such argument to be rationalizing a decision to remove money from one district and taxpayers waiting on improvements to benefit another who has not made such sacrifice. Once again, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. The cumulative effect of taking five thousand dollars here, five thousand dollars there, all of a sudden it's ten thousand dollars and I can point to a lightest sidewalk that could be replaced and made safer if that money stayed in TIP Three. A realty company generates zero sales tax, zero return to the general fund. The photography business generates one-tenth of the normal sales tax rate. For every one thousand dollars in sale, the tax amounts to six dollars and seventy-one cents and what comes back to the city is pennies from that amount. Dollars spent helping non-revenue producing entities occupy buildings downtown are dollars not spent somewhere else where they are sorely needed. We should be using this money to make repairs like fixing sidewalks in front of someone's home that will benefit from the added safety. If we truly cared about our neighbors and our taxpayers, that's where our focus should be. That's the principle I employ, those are the reasons I'm voting no. With respect to transferring money from TIP Three to TIP Seventeen, let me just say that just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. It would be one thing if this involved a major project that crossed two TIP district lines, but that's just not the case. In this case, I believe it's the business owner who should bear the cost, not the taxpayer. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have a comment? Okay, the only response, Mr. Randall, I respect your narrative. I just, what I said the other night, Ed, I don't remember if you were at Economic Development or...
No.
Okay, I lose track of all the people on which committee some days. The fact that when we did, just so everybody's reminded, when we did the budget this year ago for facade improvement, we talked about the fact that we would earmark so much money, correct Eric, tell me if I'm wrong, from TIP Three because some of the smaller TIPS might not have the money at the time for these five thousand dollar grants. This is probably only the second or third one we've had and three-fourths of this year's fiscal year is almost gone. So it was talked about, it was up front. As you said, it is legal, there is a, there's certainly a discussion and I respect everything you said, but I just want to make sure the council knows, we talked about, and the building, the one building particular here on South High Street has been emptied and the staff and I have tried probably on at least six occasions to see this building filled. And each of these projects, the owners are going to be putting in, if you were at the meetings or read the packet, between around eighty to a hundred thousand dollars of investment. And it's not a major-major, but it's a way to show that we partner and that we're happy that they're coming to Belleville and the one is an empty building for a long time. The other one's going to be a specific, I think, much improved facade improvement right there on the Public Square. So it's, it's totally, I respect whatever you all decide, but I wanted to remind you, we had talked about this and this has been used this way all the way back to the budget and the budgeting time last year. Any other comments anybody wants to make or any other questions? If not, we'll go ahead and, do we have a motion?
We have a motion and a second.
We have a motion.
Alderman Consilla made a motion.
That's hot song.
Alderman Gah made a second.
We have a motion and we have a second, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian. Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.
Aye.
Bitner.
No.
Randall.
No.
Tyler.
Aye.
I just have it.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Mr. Consilla, we now ask you to go to eleven D two.
Okay, again, on behalf of the Economic Development and Annexation Committee, I make a motion to approve a development agreement with Nestor Realty Incorporated for facade improvements at twelve East Main Street.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by, once again, Alderman Gah. Any further discussion or comments to be heard? Roll call.
Ovian.
I'm staying.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wiegand.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pousa.